Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our four commissioners meeting. We'll begin as customary with a moment of silence, but Commissioner Ames reminded me that the anniversary, the seventy-fifth anniversary of D-Day, so please keep your thoughts on the sacrifices made on our behalf seventy-five years ago. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approaching the chair is David Weisner. Before I was back to the desk, we choose.
Good morning, commissioners. David Weisner, Fortiny Town Gap with the back of the gap of D-Day. Thank you for mentioning the anniversary of D-Day, Commissioner. Very special to all of us in the military, in the guard this day. My former division, Twenty-Ninth Infantry Division, was a vanguard of playing on O'Malley Beach. I had the honor in my career of commanding the Norfolk Light Artillery Blues, which was on the first wave, a story in history, one that we all honor in all of our generations and pass that down in the guard. Twenty-Eighth Infantry Division participated later on in the invasion of Europe, so it was a great day for all of us. And as we lose those veterans, when you see one still around, please, I know you do, please take the time out and talk to them and thank them. As of four June 2019, we've had over one hundred and two thousand four hundred and twenty-seven troops that have trained on the Gap. Right now, we have started our warfighter exercise, big divisional level. We have one ongoing right now that adds an additional three thousand boots on the ground. That'll continue here pretty much throughout the month of June. Then will be followed by several brigade-level exercises, which will go to the beginning months and then finish the end of our year with another divisional warfighter. So, busy year at the Gap. Miss Nguyen, you'll be happy to know, we'll give you the live-fire exercise report for the month of June. We'll be shooting field artillery on the sixteenth through the twentieth, so Sally puts up with quite a bit of noise out where she lives, being one of our close neighbors with field artillery. We'll be doing demolitions training with high explosives on the twenty-first through the twenty-third of June. In addition to that, we have the second busiest helipad in the United States Army, the Air Army Airfield, with daily flights. Appreciate the community's patience with our racket that we do, but it's all critical training to the guard and in our country that we're doing out there. Our annual butterfly tours are coming up, and I have the dates for that. We're gonna hold them on the fifth, or July fifth, sixth, twelfth, and the thirteenth this year. They're gonna be at nine-thirty in the morning. The meeting place is gonna be Strickler Field, which is at the intersection of Asher Minor and Fisher Avenue. There'll be big signs out. Go up, see the butterflies. I know, Commissioner, I believe you've been.
And the grandchildren.
Yep. Your wife was out there, met her and the grandkids. Please come out and see that. It's really a sight to behold, all the regal fritillary butterflies if they are out in our training areas. Just a very good spectacle to see. The big pool will be open on the fifteenth of June. Please come out there and join us to swim. Multiple rates on that, that we charge a fee every day to come out there. The fees are online. You can hit our social media, Fortiny Town Gap Military Organization on Facebook. When it does, I'll take you to a link on that. Please come up and swim. We did a major effort to get that open this year, so we're happy to say it's part of our community support. We got that going. Busy at the Gap. Hopefully, we're giving a good value to the American taxpayer and providing lots of training. Any questions? That's all I have today.
I'm grateful to have you as our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, we will look for the approval of our minutes. Oh, excuse me, are there any other public comment? Just wanted to make sure. Seek approval of the minutes of our last meeting.
Seconds?
Removed in seconds. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, so ordered. Now we have Mrs. Sally Nguyen for treasurer.
Good morning. We had receipts, June the fourth and June the fifth, of two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-one-hundred-twenty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents. That brought us to a total cash of two-million-five-hundred-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety-three dollars and six cents. Our expenditures this week were one-million-one-hundred-seventy-nine-thousand-six-hundred-eighty dollars and eighty-six cents. The undistributed tax claim is thirty-one-thousand-six-hundred-sixty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. Leaves us with a balance of one-million-two-hundred-eighty-nine-thousand-five-hundred-forty-eight dollars and forty-one cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Second. Motion in a second. Any comment, question? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so ordered. Thank you, Sally. Ladies, please introduce yourselves, and then you may proceed.
Jan Schenk, human resources assistant.
Stephanie Olden, court lawyer.
Your resignations and terminations. Donna Charles Rine, fiscal officer, two retirement effective August thirty-first. Lori Dowery, fiscal assistant, retirement effective July thirty-first. Cynthia Gettle, part-time door monitor, termination effective May thirty-first. Taylor Spinesider, caseworker, two resignation effective June fourteenth. Fiona DeLiza Argos, caseworker, two removal effective May twentieth. Angela DiPaolo, full-time LPN, layoff effective June sixteenth. Regina Gray, full-time LPN, layoff effective June sixteenth. And Arlene McHale, full-time LPN, layoff effective June sixteenth. And Margot McQuaid, part-time secretary D, termination effective May thirty-first.
Make a motion to accept the resignations and terminations as read.
Second the motion.
It's removed in second. Any comment or question?
Just, I'd like to mention, I believe, it's my understanding that all of the licensed practical nurses are offered additional employment through new medical people, primary care.
Two are going to Renova.
Two are going to.
Yeah, the others were, yeah, I understand, but negotiating.
Why would they be laid off then?
Because they no longer be on our payroll. Oh, the two going to Renova are down here in your transfers.
Okay, but the three that we just mentioned.
They're no longer going to be county-employed come that day.
Right, but they have been offered.
That's what I'm saying.
Just so that they're not out the door uncaring.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
Under F M L A leave of absence, Shannon McNinn, area agency on aging, five weeks of leave of absence, return May thirtieth. Sarah Stager, central booking, up to twelve weeks, F M L A effective May thirteenth. Jeffrey Barnes from the prison, four weeks of F M L A effective April twenty-second, return May twenty-fourth. And Angel Medina, domestic relations, seven weeks, F M L A, return June third.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second to accept those family leaves and leaves of absence and returns. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
Changes in status, transfers, and promotions. Kathleen Friar, promotion from clerk type is free in children and youth to fiscal assistant in children and youth with a bi-weekly rate of one-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents effective June seventeenth. Naveen Taladres, change of status from admin assistant interpreter in the courts to sentencing guideline specialist and interpreter in the courts with a bi-weekly rate of one-thousand-two-hundred-seventy-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents, also fifty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents bi-weekly interpreter pay effective June seventeenth. Trudy Seifer, a transfer from full-time LPN at the prison to full-time LPN at Renova, no change in her rate, effective June seventeenth. And Angela Garbus, a transfer from full-time LPN at the prison to full-time LPN at Renova, no change in her rate, effective June seventeenth.
Make a motion to approve the changes of status as presented.
Second.
It's removed in second. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
Then I have a motion to eliminate all nursing physicians, full-time and part-time, at the Lebanon County Correctional Facility, effective June sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
So moved.
Second. It's removed in seconded to eliminate those positions. Any comment, question, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
Then children and youth would like to hire Ryan Harbrath as a caseworker, one, with a bi-weekly salary of one-thousand-one-hundred-seventy-nine dollars and forty-five cents, effective June tenth.
So moved.
Second.
It's removed in seconded. Any comment or question? None, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
On the salary board, motion to approve all transactions previously read, plus the following. Owen Williams, full-time correctional officer at the prison, incremental increase of sixteen dollars and fifty-six cents, effective June second. Amber Schwartz, full-time correctional officer at the prison, one-time longevity payment of five-hundred dollars, effective June sixth. And Bradley Ebling, telecommunicator at DES, incremental increase of eighteen dollars and fifty-five cents, effective June sixteenth.
So moved. Second. Make a motion in a second to accept those changes. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
Under conference seminar requests, under mandated, Helen Whitehead, from area agency on aging, would like to attend Protective Services for older adults in Harrisburg, June sixteenth through twentieth. No registration fee, mileage meals, parking and reimbursement, eighteen credits mandated by P E A. Dan Seaman, Ty Conley, Paul Stumpf, Mike Keener, Carrie Wenzler, and Tony Kiff, from Sussman Office, would like to attend South Central, Chatham, Navy, Eddie's, Parkland, June seventh. No registration fee, mileage meals and reimbursement, three credits mandated by Department of State. And Paul Eisenhardt, from the D A's Office, would like to attend the twenty-nineteen Annual Summer Meeting in Palmington, July fourteen through eighteen. Eight-hundred-dollar registration fee, lodging meals, parking, reimbursement, six credits mandated by P A C L A Board. Matthew Brently, from the D A's Office Detective Bureau, would like to attend the Celebrate Mobile Examiners' Force in Manheim, June twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth. Three-thousand-eight-hundred-fifty-dollar registration fee, no other cost mandated to keep crime certification. Karen Hess, Stephanie Hackett, Susan Shepherd, Nick O'Brien, Eric Frye, and Andrea Pelfrey, from Domestic Relations, would like to attend D R E T email conference at Harrisburg, September twenty-second through the twenty-sixth. One-thousand-five-hundred-dollar registration fee, lodging meals, mileage and parking reimbursement, mandated by P C S E and D R E T. Danielle Gray, Kim Schultz, Brandon Cole, Kayla Conyers, Brianna Brainerd, and Rhonda Shook, from N H I D, would like to attend the Growing Brain in Harrisburg, July sixteenth. No registration fee, mileage and no reimbursement, six credits mandated by O C D E L. Sally Berry and Audrey Ratau, from Probation Services, would like to attend P A Chiefs' General Membership Meeting at State College, on June twenty and twenty-first. No registration fee, lodging and meal reimbursement, six credits mandated by P P P. Chris Five, from Probation Services, would like to attend National Drug Court Conference in National Harbor, Maryland, July fourteenth through seventeen. Seven-hundred-and-forty-five-dollar registration fee, lodging, meal, and reimbursement, mandated by P P P. And there's been a last minute change in the last training. Elliot Katz will be the only one attending from the police winter office, their criminal walls until he's out of Harrisburg, on June sixth and seventh. Two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar registration fee, mileage, parking, reimbursement, twelve credits mandated by P A C L A.
I'll make a motion to accept the conference and seminar requests as presented.
Second. We have a motion in a second to accept the mandated requests. Any comment or question? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
Under non-mandated, Jamie Wolm from the Commissioner's Office, would like to attend C C A P County Commissioner Summit at State College, on June fourteenth. No registration fee and no other costs.
Make a motion to set.
Make a motion in a second. Any comment or question? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved. Thank you. Very well done. Thank you.
Good morning.
Well, good morning, sir.
James. Good morning. My name is Jim Donmoyer. I'm the executive director of Lebanon County Commission on Drug and Alcohol Abuse. I'm here today to present to the commissioners two items. The first item would be fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen contract amendments. I believe I provided you with the contract amendment sheet. There's only one amendment, the RACE project. And the reason I'm amending this contract at such late date, we only have a few more weeks in June, we are going to move forward with the Vivitrol coordinator positions at the county prison. And there are some expenses that will occur between now and July first that I want to make sure that you guys are aware of, that we will be paying between now and July first. The person, I believe, is already hired, so there'll be some trainings, some of that stuff, getting that person ready to, once we're able to get into prison, be able to hit the ground running service. So that's why this is a late amendment, but we can spend money between now and July first. That's what we'd like to do, as they kind of like to accept that amendment. Is there any questions?
I do have one question.
Can we get a motion?
Well, I don't know which I'm voting for, that was to clarify my answer. Is it, are we doing the fifty-seven thousand or the forty thousand plus a fifty-seven?
We're doing the Vivitrol coordinator, and if you go across the line, it's broken down to how much that is per month, and then the cap for that is fifty-seven thousand dollars.
So this is just the fifty-seven?
Yes, with the forty thousand is already in place, and the forty thousand will, have already been spent by July one. That's for a totally different program and service.
Thank you.
And this will, the fifty-seven thousand dollars will cover this staff and whatever he or she may need to do what they need to do.
I'll make a motion to approve the Vivitrol coordinator contract for fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Second.
Make a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
The only other thing I'd like to add to that is that I talked to Warren Carnes, who's gonna be here today. He's on the agenda. I did not have the opportunity to follow up with him to find out if they received a D O C grant for this position. But like we spoke before, I think I spoke between one of the three of you at a prison where we were wanting to move forward whether or not they get a grant or not.
Which is great.
That's why I was looking to get in today. The second thing I'm here to present to the commissioners will be the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty contracts for our office. I would ask you to make your way to page ten of the contracts that I presented. There's only two additions to all our contracts. The first one is on page ten, the provider's pyramid, and the program is the facilities in Mazurum. And as you can see, non-hospital detox, adult short-term rehab, and adult long-term rehab was added to our contracts.
I think page ten is missing. It looks like they copy the front of each page, but not the back. We're gonna lengthen it.
Yeah, the first version that we received from our contract manager was not the correct version. As she indicated, I don't know which one you're reflecting.
The corrected one is only.
I can give everybody, I'll take that off.
I think, you know, if you just tell me the amount.
Oh, it was, okay. So, non-hospital detox is two-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars a day. Adult short-term rehab is two-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars a day. And adult long-term rehab is two-seventy-six, and then it tells me the same thing. Now, again, I can say with confidence that those are on the higher end of what we pay per day for those services. Again, what I believe is important is having enough resources that the only bed that's available is there, that we would have a bed and we could use it, but that would not be my priority. I have a priority list according to, obviously, the services they provide, but the distance away from accounting the price, a lot of things go into factoring where we start our search for a bed. So this would not be higher than our priority, but I think it's important that we have more beds than we need. And then, so that's, are there any questions about that? Reserve County, those three services. And then on page twelve, again, it's the same thing I talked about, the amendment for eighteen nineteen, this Vivitrol coordinator position, just listed there, so it's already accounted for for next year's.
Make a motion to approve the contracts as presented.
Second the motion.
Second, any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
Well, order.
Good morning. You brought the mathematician with you.
Yeah, I did, but didn't trust my calculator.
Good morning, Jim. Jim was back.
I'm Kevin Trump, administrator of Lebanon County Mental Health and National Disabilities Early Intervention Program. You know Jim Donmoyer, executive director of Lebanon County Administration of Drug and Alcohol Abuse. And this is Sue Douglas. She is our director of fiscal operations and has oversight of the finances of both the N H I D E I department as well as the Drug and Alcohol Commission. She took the position of ex-teacher. Even with the bumps in the road, she still smiled. We have just a few items for you this morning. I'm gonna change the order of the reviews because one of them involves Jim and Drug and Alcohol Commission, so if we could go through what is item number four, I wonder whether I've had sent over. It is the agreement with C A D H C, the Capital Area Behavioral Health Collaborative. As you know, we are involved in the Health Choices Program, and we have been associated with four counties for a number of years, golfing, gambling, area, sports. There are five counties involved, and we have an administrative organization, Capital Behavioral Health Collaborative, the managers of our programs and services. And if you may remember, we are here several times since January first, as we're transitioning to, over to a different sort of a format for health choices, where we used to contract direct, each of the five counties contracted directly with the county of Pennsylvania. We each got the dollars and the contracts, and then we would pull them at C A D H C, and would then distribute them to our provider. And it became clear that it was more beneficial to have a single contract. And actually, we had wanted to do that years ago, but the Commonwealth did not want us to. Now they're encouraging it. So, what I have before you is the final piece of the puzzle for that transition. This is an administrative agreement between the county of Lebanon and Capital Area Behavioral Health Collaborative. Each of the five counties is doing the same thing, so we're all on the same page. And this would be, as I said, sort of final link in transition to that single, single contract. It is an eight-year agreement, so hopefully we will not be in there as soon, unless there's some type of emergency order here. But it has, it has been actually developed, been reviewed by C A D H C's legal counsel and the Health Ramps or something. I don't know if Jim wants to add anything to that, but I do not, I mean, I pretty much just like, it's really a much better format to do it, it's more efficient, actually helps level out some of the funding inequalities in the county, so it's good.
I'll make a motion to adopt the administrative agreement for the Behavioral Health Collaborative.
Second. It's removed in seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
Thank you very much. I do have two signature sheets that I have to turn over. I'm gonna extrude myself. Inspection, go on, as you're extruding.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. The other items, if we go back to the top, is our fiscal year eighteen nineteen contract amendments. As you know, we have several times to add here to amend the contracts with our service providers. It's primarily due to changes in the needs of individual consumers who need more services for whatever reason, whether it's an emergency or not. But the, for, the changes for eighteen nineteen, the fiscal year that would be over shortly, of our total fifteen amendments, which have a combined total increase of one-hundred-and-five-thousand-four-hundred-forty-five dollars. That money's already in our budget to cover that, so we're not looking to transition this on to be compared to this year's.
I'll make a motion to approve the eighteen nineteen contract amendments as presented.
I'll second that motion.
It's removed in seconded. Any questions? If you'd please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
Thank you. And then the third is the contracts for upcoming bunch of year, through twenty twenty. We have new contracts. They will increase our budget by six-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand to three, actually, our provider budget, to three-million-nine-hundred-ninety-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-nine, six-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars. Again, all those dollars are within our budget. We're not looking for additional funds to cover those. It's just kind of a shipload of funds within our, within the budget that we will present to you in the next year. So, that would be the total of them for nineteen twenty.
I'll make a motion to adopt the new contract totals.
Second. It's removed in seconded. Then we put those nineteen twenty contracts. Questions or comments? Not in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
Thank you very much. And then finally, Sue and her staff, which is pretty much Sue at the moment. And then finally, Sue and her staff, which is pretty much Sue at the moment.
Just crank that down.
Yes, she's got two account vacancies, so she's the only one that's doing it all. And learning the drug and alcohol.
There's the bumps that we break down.
Yes, they are.
Sounds like boulders.
They are, yes. Again, she's smiling, so I didn't get too nervous here. And we are in the middle of filling those positions. So Sue did put together a budget for nineteen twenty, which includes the contracts we just spoke of. The actual budget increase is an increase of $12,000 for next year. So Sue worked very hard and was sent back to the drawing board a couple of times. They try and make the budget work. So come back with a budget that is $8,563,666, which again is an increase of $12,000. I like to emphasize that the nineteen twenty budget, it does not contain an increase for additional funds from the county commissioners. Again, Sue found a way to move things around and make that work. And in fact, I believe there's actually a reduction of $31,000 from fiscal year that that's just ended. So that's the budget that we would oppose after the campaign.
Make a motion to approve the nineteen twenty budget as presented.
I'll second the motion with thanks to Sue for finding those ways to save us money.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments?
I just have one too. Much of the...
Yeah, all right. All right, well. Yeah.
And then also budgeting a deficit of $709,000.
Which is what I call a little match of what we'd be under required. And a lot of the funding accounts have a required match.
Anything else? Not on favor, the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Another thing I'd offer, I'm sure you thought of this, help or something to help it, really, some of your, for the mundane things that you may deal with, that someone could just be...
I, yeah, I kind of ask the people here, there, and everywhere to, I have two staff that I'll ask, I ask to do things. So far, we're, we're okay.
What she's humbly saying is the two fiscal assistants she have, she asked me to step up and take up a lot of the work.
Yeah, I get that. I'm just saying, it's, I have to be looking at just being able to play with a little turn at the end of some of these spots that we have to consider.
We're hoping to have this response filled with civil services.
It is consideration, but we're fortunate, we have a four-count interview scheduled for next week. So, I mean, compared to the last time, it's only a county position, just like a goldmine. Because, as you mentioned, the civil service process, actually, for some people would rather not apply than go through that process. So we're very fortunate this time. We actually got ahead of ourselves a little bit and interviewed some other people that applied in the opening that weren't yet on the civil service list. We thought, well, we can stay ahead of the game and interview them, and if they were still interested, we could encourage them then to go through the civil service process. So we've interviewed some, we can't hire them yet because they aren't on the civil service list, but the four we interviewed, who's they, they are on the list, and we could hire them. So we're very pleased about that. The other part, and Sue in response to Commissioner Phillips' suggestion, and I had the same suggestion, what about some temporary help, is that catch 22 of that you spend your time trying to educate them and show them system.
Yes.
But we did make the offer to Sue.
And our, the other, the other fiscal assistant that is gone technically is actually still in the office, so she still does most of what she used to do, plus her new job. I've got to thank her.
Like you're doing.
Yes. So we're all, all going together, so, yeah.
When you have a team, everybody's got their own system, no matter how big you are.
Very good. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the support as always.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've got the tapes. We're...
I am Aaron Moir. I am the administrator of the County Children's Union. I'm here today to present first quarter invoices in the amount of $1,589,731.29. And I recommend that you approve these invoices.
I'll make a motion to approve the invoices as presented.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Not on favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Same sign, so move.
I am also here to present a new contract for the agency for York County Youth Development Center. This is for their shelter care program, and it is in the amount of $375.60 per day. I want to start by saying that we understand that this rate is a higher rate. And the reason for this contract is because we recently had a really difficult child, both the behavioral and mental health concerns that we needed recently for. The child spent three weeks in the Good Samaritan, well-studied ER, and they required our staff to provide 24-hour supervision of this child. So it was a really big burden on the agency as far as having that staff coverage, load overtime pay. She was there on a 302 order. They were trying to locate a mental health and patient that for her, and they were unsuccessful. And they requested that she be discharged immediately. We had to be referral to all of our contract with providers. None of them were willing or able to take her, so we'd have to look at other providers that we don't have contracts with, which is why she is now in this placement. She does have a recommendation from Perform Care for residential treatment facility placement, and she will remain in the shelter until they can find an appropriate place of work. We recommend that you approve the contract with York County Youth Development Center.
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract with Development Center.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Have these who have the time?
Yes.
Any comments beyond that? If you're not on favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Same sign, so move.
Thank you.
They have the one in Florida.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good morning. Please introduce yourselves, and then proceed.
Melissa Caninas with City Lebanon.
And Janelle Lindoff with the City Lebanon.
City Lebanon has respectfully requested $50,000 of the affordable housing trust funds to provide ongoing funding for our owner occupied housing rehabilitation program. The funds will also be used as a match in support of the city's home application to DCED in the amount of $250,000. The city has also pledged $160,000 of our 2018 and 2019 CBG funds for housing rehab. The city appreciates the past support from the commissioners that you provided with the affordable housing funds. We held a public hearing for our home application on May 23rd in the city council chambers. May meeting, the city council approved a resolution for us to submit an application, and the application was submitted by June 5th, which was the deadline. We spoke with DCED about receiving a lot of our support from the commissioners, and they will accept it after the deadline. The funding is extremely important, not only to the city, but also to mitigate about six low to moderate income homeowners that funding projected to assist. It will allow the city to improve and maintain aging housing and provide safe and affordable housing for homeowners. If approved, the affordable housing funds will be used as a conditional grant for giving over a 10-year period, 10% forgiven each year for the owner, as the owner continues to rezide in the property. Do you have any questions?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to provide the $50,000 requested by the city of Lebanon for the affordable housing program.
I'll second the motion. Does this include a letter of support?
Yes. Yeah, you would provide a letter saying that you approved $50,000, and then we would send to...
Excellent.
Would you, is that something that you'd be able to do quickly?
Yesterday.
Surely.
Do you have, do you have the, what you needed to say?
I can, I can email.
You can do that.
Yeah, I can do that. Okay, that'd be great.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and we're in discussion. If not on favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Same sign, so move.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Daniel, did you have something? Betsy, did you hear us?
No. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Your Honor.
Good morning.
You may introduce yourself, and then proceed with the proceeding.
I am Bob Dowd, the Director of Department of Emergency Services. I'm here this morning with a renewal for our professional services agreement, and I'm consulting specifically to manage the act of all requirements of the high-line funding of the boarding and residential education and of all guidance. I'd say three-year agreements are existing three-year agreements expire in line. This contract represents a 10% increase in overall cost from the last time we did so. Yes, standard standard.
And that brings a total amount of two?
Total amount over three years will be $66,000, billed at $2,000.
I'll make a motion that we approve the MCM contract.
I'll second the motion.
Motion, and a second for given, and question or comment? Not on favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Same sign, so move. Thank you, Robert.
I'm not here yet, so let me go. Sorry, a few, I'll just do a few things towards the end. So the first item I have for you is a SAVN maintenance and service contract between the Pennsylvania District Attorney's Institute and the county. SAVN is a program that is a statewide program that is used for victim notification services for when a victim is notified, when a incarcerated individual is being released or any other information that they may need as a victim through the District Attorney's Victim Services Witness. Witness services to renew that contract for nineteen twenty.
I'll make a motion to approve the SAVN agreement.
It's been moved and seconded, then we approve the SAVN. How many questions? Not on favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Same sign, so move.
I have disabled veteran exceptions for real estate applications here for John Coon of Deer Drive, Jonestown, Jean Perrin, Opera Street, Lebanon, Scott Mallie, Edgemont Avenue, Newmanstown, all who have met the requirements for the program and have received notifications there.
Make a motion that we approve the exemption for real estate taxes for the four presented.
And I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve those property tax exemptions. Any question or comment? Not on favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Same sign, so move.
I have a application for county aid for Liquid Fuels, two of them, versus for South Bonberry Township. And they would be using this for general maintenance in the amount of $6,991, which is equal to the amount granted there. Also, for Richland Borough, would be using their county aid for road salt purchases in the amount of $1,519, same as the current.
I'll make a motion to approve the two to Liquid Fuels requests.
Second.
A motion, and a second to approve those two requests. Any question or comment? If you're not on favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Same sign, so move.
Actually, I'm sorry, Daniel, could we move right to the Prime Care? I'd like to use a little more time, they're all here. Carol Service, is that good? All right.
Good morning.
Gordon, would you like to introduce your colleagues this morning?
Yes, my name is Gordon Robert Barnes, from the Lebanon County Correction Facility, a son of a workman. To my immediate right is the CEO of Prime Care Medical, Esquire Thomas Weber. And to his right is the Vice President Frank Kamikowski from Prime Care Medical.
Proceed, proceed.
Well, Commissioners, as I basically said on April 4th, that we wanted to enter into a contract of agreement with Prime Care Medical and seek that contract. Contract as of this date has been drafted, has been reviewed by our solicitor, and all the components that I explained to you on the 4th have been put into place and have been indicated in that contract. And I'm coming to you today to ask your permission to formally put that, to sign that contract. And I'll have, I'll defer to Tom and Frank to explain the specifics of the contract that we have, and also give a backdrop to their, to their company. But we want to try to get this up and moving and actually have it in place for a startup date of June 16th, as I, 17th, as I've indicated, on the April 4th meeting, and give them permission to have access to the facility as of next Monday, June 10th, to start bringing in supplies, et cetera, so the transition will be less catastrophic, so to speak, as far as from an operational standpoint. So with that said, I'll defer to Mr. Weber and Mr. Kamikowski for any questions that you may have regarding the contract.
The only thing I'd like to add, it's been reviewed by our solicitor, but it's also been dovetailed with our insurance carriers.
Yes, yes, that's correct. That's correct.
There have been many hands of them, yes.
I have two questions. Number one, nonprofits don't pay sales tax. Does the county pay sales tax? Does the county pay sales tax?
No.
Okay, because in the contract, it has sales tax of eighteen hundred dollars on the dental suite?
Yes. That's because we're purchasing it for you. We have to pay tax.
So you have to pay the tax, and we're...
And that we're, we'll make the ally of the capital contribution all at once, and acquire it, and then we'll allow you to pay us back over thirty-six months.
Okay.
We can save the eighteen hundred dollars that you have to come up with, the thirty thousand.
Okay, well, I wonder why the sales tax was there? That answers that. And then my second question is, it doesn't really say here that we retain the dental suite should you exit, and that we paid it. So is that something that should be added? In other words, I see where the contract is six months, and then three, and then with the extension of one and one years, but it doesn't say that we retain ownership of that dental suite.
Yeah, that's not a problem. We can certainly add that. I would hate to see that slow down the process.
Oh, no, I don't want to slow down the process, it's just an observation.
Yeah.
That could make it a little more clear.
Understood.
Since you're purchasing.
But you're paying it, so you will, it will be yours at the end of thirty-six months. So that's the initial term, maybe what we could do is, once, if, hoping, assuming you'll take the option here with the addendum for that, we can make it clearer, or we could do it sooner if you want, whoever provides you the company.
I have some other questions I have.
I guess we could just add a line to there, it's not a signature page, so you can... Yeah, maybe make a note to the thirty-three thousand, I paid you that this happens, and he will, I assure you.
I believe you, I mean, you seem like you've done very well with the contract and worked with the solicitors, and we had more than one involved, so, but those are just questions from an administrator, not an attorney, that I saw.
I will take note of it, and we'll be clear moving forward with other counties. So thank you for pointing that out. Okay, do you want to refer to anything in here, or you want to talk in general? Well, yeah, I know you have a busy agenda, so we certainly don't want to take it more time than necessary. We're here primarily just to answer your questions that you have regarding the specifics of the contract. We're very pleased to be here, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to work with Leland County as a company that's been in existence for thirty-three years. We have long to form this relationship, and pleased that we are starting off. I will mention that the average length of our contracts is about thirteen years, and that's with adding fifteen contracts in the last three years. We still have our first contract thirty-three years ago, we still have our second contract from thirty-two years ago. And hopefully, the way we negotiated and worked out issues with this is indicative of our business model, and that is to work closely with you. We know that this is a difficult environment that we're all working in, we have a difficult patient base, there will be problems that arise, but we address those heads-on, we encourage communication. You'll see us at prison board meetings, if you ever have an issue to call any of us in, we'll be more than happy to make the trip here. And this, this is one of the things that separates us from our competitors, is the amount of support we give to our facilities. Oftentimes, create satellite operation, and no one thinks or cares about it, why we've been able to maintain these contracts is because of our presence. And I know Frank and Jamie already had a relationship just from going back and interacting. We work closely with C cap and Timmy, in fact, counsel, who reviewed that as the final okay, was a law school classmate of mine. So we had no problem ironing out that last little bit of clarity that she wanted, and so we're looking forward to it. As I said, we're here to answer any questions.
You're in all contiguous counties?
Well, we affectionately used to refer to Leland County as the doughnut hole, because when you would look at our footprint, we had everything around, but not Leland, and now we've closed that in and made it a cake.
Or the filling in the doughnut.
I would think from resource sharing and, you know, shifting people, that would really be a good marriage.
Yes, yes, from, and that's our ability to take this over is because we have resources so close. I know we ran into an issue about six weeks ago where there was a need for some emergency oversight from an R N standpoint, where we're able to provide that on an emergency basis until we got to this point, so.
And we pointed out earlier during our transactions for personnel, would you offer, at least offer, all of our existing nurses employment with your company? Thank you.
And I think this package is a great enhancement over the, you know, piecemeal approach. This is comprehensive, it's following the recommendation of our insurance carrier, so I think it's just a great upgrade for us and for our...
Can I just spend a moment speaking of price proposal? I guess that you was before you, because that's often where the questions come from, is the fiscal part of it. The proposal in front of you is for the first contract year, three million and thirty-one thousand dollars, which is broken down into a monthly fee of two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars per month. I spoke to this a couple of months ago about what our existing costs are at the prison. If you add everything together, and actually, I think I may have missed one or two things in my summary of that, in the sum total, and that is a little over two million dollars a year that we currently spend on this kind of healthcare. So obviously, this is a significant increase for us, and I think that was something that you anticipated, I think that we knew all along this was going to be a more costly way of doing things, but certainly a more comprehensive way of doing things.
And we never had that before.
Right, so we're adding some things here, not just time, but also services and other things that are, that are clearly going to be a benefit. The way the pricing works, or the way the contract's going to work, and if I get any of this mistaken here, feel free, but Prime Care for that cost provides all of the services, pharmaceutical, mental health, medical, and so on, nursing, and also is responsible for the first two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a contract year of outside medical care. And that's detailed pretty finely in the contract here, what that entails. If for some reason they don't reach the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a given year, the county and Prime Care split fifty-fifty the remainder of the unspent balance of that. At the same time as we're putting, as we're paying for the monthly amount, we'll be putting aside nine thousand dollars per month in a sort of a catastrophic fund, I guess you might call it, it's another layer. That will be then available in case the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is expended, if that cap is reached, it will go into that hundred and eight thousand dollars that we've set aside as a catastrophic fund. If, if some or, let's see, if, if any portion less than the total amount, so it's a hundred and eight thousand dollars a year, if less than that is utilized, then we have the ability to carry that forward as a credit to the next contract year. If it's all used, and we've gone through that full amount, that first two hundred and fifty-two thousand and the hundred and eight thousand dollars, and now we're going to, you know, more than we ever thought, we will simply get invoiced for that amount, we will pay, and then invoice. Right, so, so there's an incentive there for everyone to kind of keep the costs under control. They, they'll do the billing, so any savings they realize, they keep two-point-three percent of the savings.
Right.
So there's another incentive. So this has built-in incentives, I think, for everyone to just try to keep the cost down, of course, not at the expense of care, but, but just in the interest of, you know, in public money. In this landscape, the viability of companies such as ours is based upon risk avoidance. And as you painfully learned, the biggest risk is the litigation, and how you avoid litigation is providing good comprehensive care, and that's our model. Jamie mentioned a couple of things that I would just like to highlight because oftentimes are overlooked. You mentioned we'll bring in our own pharmaceuticals, we'll be responsible. Due to our relationships with pharmacies, we often see savings of ninety percent over what counties have been paying when they're using a local pharmacy. In fact, there's one contract that we took over about ten years ago, and our contract was less than their pharmaceutical bill. And to this date, our contract still is less than what they were paying for pharmaceuticals ten years ago, so we net that saving. The other thing is the claims administration that is overlooked. When counties get their bills, they pay them, and they're good responsible payers in that regard. So when you get a bill from an outside entity, you oftentimes will just cut a check. We claim, we process claims just like an insurance company would to make sure that we're paying a fair, reasonable amount for the services rendered, but we're not overpaying. Last year, we processed about twenty-eight million dollars in claims for our clients, and they ended up paying around seven million. So there's about a seventy-five percent discount in terms of what the county exposures. We would hope to effectuate similar savings in this regard, so you look at that number, and we do recognize it's a large item on any county's budget, but we do strive in order to make it efficient, comprehensive, and affordable.
My question, you, listening to you, is, are you storing excess pharmaceuticals on site, or do you fill the prescriptions and bring them in daily?
We do both. We will have some stock, because some individuals will come in after hours, and we don't want this, discontinue any medications that can be verified. It's our goal to have any medications that can be verified in a patient's mouth within twelve hours, so we will have some stock medication. We know from our nursing presence over the last couple of weeks that there is a presence of pharmaceuticals in the facility already. You know, we comply, our pharmacies will come in and do an inspection quarterly to make sure that we are compliant with our all Pennsylvania pharmaceutical regulations, as well as D E A regulations. One other thing that was not related to the pricing proposal, which is, as Tom mentioned, you know, painfully aware, the risk and indemnity and insurance coverage and so on that's in here is really what we've spent the last couple of weeks hammering out, and, you know, that is vastly improved over our situation prior. And again, as you mentioned, E Corp's in-house counsel has reviewed this, and she and Tom know each other well, and that was really beneficial, that they work closely together, and, you know, we knew what we wanted through Barb's envelope, and basically anything that Barb was happy with, we were happy with. Unfortunately, she was busy for a while, but then we were finally able to connect, I think it was a two-and-a-half-minute phone call, on our part to work out where we needed to be, and then have the thirty seconds to make the change and email it out. So I just wanted to mention that, because that's been a big part of this, and I feel really good about it.
The only other thing I wanted to add was to commend the board and his staff and team down there for delivering this on time from the beginning of the process. You projected we'd be doing it now, and we are, and that's in light of a number of other initiatives that you're putting out at the same time, so I realize that the plate's pretty full, but this was, you know, pushed to the front of the stove to get this, you know, as a priority, so we appreciate your folks doing it.
I'm thankful that they're here, and it's been a long time coming, at least for Prime Care, as they said, we worked on a whole night with the former president, Dr. Carl Hoffman, and every conference I would see, and he says, when are we going to fill that hole? Well, you know, on June sixth of two thousand nineteen, we're filling that hole, and I think it's a good move for the county, but, you know, I can't take all the credit. Prime Care's been instrumental in helping us in this transition, and other staff, despite having other things on the plate, so I appreciate what you're doing.
Did you mention twenty, June seventeenth, effective startup date? Is there anything, well, I'm assuming there is some sort of a transition?
Yes.
Going on right now?
That's correct.
But that your arrival isn't going to be like opening up a new...
Well, hey, we're here. Typically, it is, because normally, we'd be replacing another contractor who would be responsible up until that period. Fortunately, you know, we don't have that situation here, so the board and the county have been kind enough to allow us to start a soft opening on the tenth. We've been in the building for a number of weeks, learning, trying to put in some of our processes, but this will enable us to gear up, so to speak, because normally, we start at twelve oh one, at midnight, and take over, and it can be rather hectic. When we do our transition, we bring in experienced personnel from other facilities for at least two weeks to work around the clock with staff here, so it's on-the-job training, as well as, because we'll institute a computer and electronic medical records on day one, and so there's a learning curve, so we make sure that we have resources that know the Prime Care way here to help with that transition. That's a long-winded attorney answer for, yes, we'll be starting soon.
And one question from the board. Does Dr. Yelich, who's still the president, doctor has a side now, and at what point will that end?
On the seventeenth.
On the seventeenth. Okay, thank you. Make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Prime Care contract for healthcare at the prison.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? One more. If you're not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so ordered. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's for last, I guess, huh?
Yeah, that's the way we'll look at it.
Yeah, absolutely. The board, and please introduce yourselves, and then we move ahead.
Good morning, I'm Carol Davies, I'm the Commissioner of the Leland County Area Agency on Aging, and with me today is Dean Wies, our Senior Center for Services of our Care.
Go ahead, Carol.
Okay, we're here to continue a discussion that we had in May about the area agency on aging space. And when we met on May twenty-second, we reviewed some information regarding the bus that we've used for a number of years for our senior center trips, and basically, we're at the point where we're considering disposing of this bus and entering into chartering the sports trips that the participants of the senior center take. So that's kind of our end goal, to look for a decision on the disposition of the bus, and then to decide what to do with regards to updating for the trips in the future. The last time we met, Commissioner Witz mentioned some research that she had done about the current bus that we own, and I thought it might be advantageous to take a look at that research before we go any further, because that seemed to be a concern that was blocking the decision that we made. So I provided the information that Commissioner Witz had compiled, and then I provided a little bit of an analysis that we peeked from our internal records regarding the bus, and one of the things that I noticed in the information that Commissioner Witz provided, where she looked at the number of trips that would be taken in the bus and fare that we charged, and was calculating that those fares would certainly cover the cost of buying a new bus, or cover the cost of purchasing a bus. And what I provided was trips that were taken in our bus over the course of the last four years, going back to two thousand sixteen. And when we look at two thousand sixteen and seventeen, which are really the years when we were operating solely with our bus, because in two thousand eighteen, that year's kind of a hybrid, because we were using our own bus, and then after an accident that occurred, we sort of shelved that bus and began using charter trips. So if you look at two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen, we only took forty-seven and thirty-five trips in the bus in those two years, which is considerably less than we had been taking longer in the past, and that was used in the calculations that Commissioner Witz provided. And the way we had structured our fare in the past was that we were only looking to cover the cost of the bus driver, the cost of the fuel used to run the bus, and the cost of the maintenance for the bus, and those things were... And those things were not included in your calculation. So what we were doing was just trying to cover those ongoing expenses, and there was never an amount put into our fare to cover a replacement of the bus. So that, we haven't accumulated fares that could replace the bus.
Stephen Carroll.
Yes, I'm sorry. That's okay.
Is insurance also part of that, those other costs that are taken?
We did not count that. And we were just trying to get the most very direct cost. So certainly, that's a cost that was not considered in the calculation, whether what was the appropriate fare to charge in the trip. And our fare was based on how far the trip went. So in the county, we're charging six dollars, and then twenty to forty miles, it was thirteen and then over forty miles, eighteen dollars per trip. One of the things that we had been asked was how many people actually take these bus trips. Unfortunately, that was one that our system does not track, but what we were able to provide is the number of people that participate in our senior center programs. And you can see in two thousand sixteen, seven hundred eighty people participated in the program. So if it's a bus trip, that could be attending a meal, that could be an exercise program or a bingo event, a Christmas party, it could be anything. So those numbers are somewhat of the same for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. And of course, two thousand nineteen is only a partial year, so the number isn't quite as high. I'll stop there, because I know you-
Sure. If I may give it another perspective. First of all, I- First of all, I thought that there was something that you pointed out in your response written that I was unaware of. There were certain ones that the bus does not-
Correct, correct.
So I did not realize that. I want to acknowledge that. But also, I believe in previous years, like sixteen and seventeen, each senior center was trying to organize their own trips, and it was not all the area agency on aging senior centers working together as a whole to fill a bus. Am I correct on that?
Typically, one or two of our centers could fill a bus by themselves, by that center. There were other centers that were struggling to fill a bus, and they would contact one of the other, all the centers, and say, "Hey, I have seats, X amount of seats for this particular trip." One thing that we had, have had for the last, gosh, fourteen years, was the minimum ridership. So in other words, you know, we're paying to take that bus out there for a twelve-hour trip theoretically, and if we only have fifteen riders, it's hard to collect the fare that we need to maintain and cover the expenses that we've had. So we instituted a minimum ridership, twenty and then twenty-five riders later, so that they would have to pay for that number of people to take that trip.
Thank you. I wanted to verify that, so that now we have an opportunity to have more ridership, because all seniors' centers can be included from the beginning, every time.
Well, theoretically, they could all, they could do that from the very beginning.
But they had to wait to be asked.
It was-
That was what I heard. Okay. And then number two, in reviewing the responses from the seniors who do ride the bus-
Yes.
I heard overwhelmingly, bring back Faye. So there is a qualified driver who they really like?
That was through Lebanon Transit initially, and then we had her, but I don't think she's driving yet.
No, we had an incident, and no longer. She's not.
Okay, was not aware of that. And then the, probably the largest thing that I don't think has been considered, that I think should be considered, is the fact that you're talking about you can't spend more than X amount of dollars in a year, because that's what you bring in, and there's no carryover kind of thing.
Right.
However, if the county fronted the money, the seniors could pay back the county on an annual basis for however many years it takes to pay back the bus.
You're-
I don't think our ridership supports the funds that it would take to do that. And then, I'm just kind of trying to think this through, if we did, we're back to the problem of finding a driver, we're back to the problem of what to do when our one bus is not available, or-
Breaks down.
Breaks down, I mean, Dean and I were just talking about a situation where our bus did break down on a trip, and how difficult it was to get those people home safely during that time. So if we were going to do something like that, then it would also mean that we would have to be building that amount into our fare, so then obviously, our fares would have to go up.
But I did my calculations, admittedly with extra months, on the base five dollars, not with all the additional funding that you do charge, the thirteen and eighteen.
Right.
So I can see where it would be quite beneficial. And then, we would also have that bus available for tours, for the visit Lebanon Valley, for the Lebanon Valley Economic Development Corporation and others, because the county has a stake in that bus, as well as have it available for evacuations, should we need those, if there would be a crisis with whatever flooding, bomb scares, whatever.
Certainly, you know, having our own bus is something we've done for a long time, so we've considered some of these things. And obviously, we operated a bus for many, many years when we were taking a lot more trips than we've been taking in the past few years. One of the things we kind of found out anecdotally through our regular contract monitoring process is that even Lebanon Transit is having difficulty in finding bus drivers. So for us, that was one of the biggest concerns, is where to get a qualified driver. And not only that, but we're not in the bus business. And I think, you know, Dean and I talked about this, we were very fortunate in the past, because as luck would have it, or however it happened, we had a fabulous gentleman driving our bus for many, many years. And so we were a little bit spoiled, but because of that, we didn't, we never had to develop a process to really vet the driver and make sure they were properly trained and know all the things that a driver should need. And we did discuss with Lebanon Transit the opportunity of maybe working with them to hire our drivers or to use their drivers, and they were unable to work with us because of, you know, various concerns within their organization. So they were not able to assist us with this. So it kind of, it kind of leaves us on our own as far as finding that well-qualified bus driver. And I will tell you truly, I don't feel that I have the qualifications to say whether or not an individual is qualified, or I would feel comfortable saying, "Yeah, this is the person that I would trust with all our passengers."
Just, and with that concept of the county buying the bus and being reimbursed, and as Carol said, the fares would really have to-
Yes.
Spike. The last full year, the fare was fifteen dollars per rider, total receipts were twenty thousand four hundred, and total costs were twenty-one thousand. So if you even doubled the fare to thirty dollars with these same ridership statistics, you know, the receipts would be, say, forty thousand dollars, but with a bus, it would cost three or four hundred thousand dollars, and would take you twenty-some years to pay it back, even though it makes sense, even with-
That's not the figures I heard when we did our workshop.
I'm going from the table that you put together from the full years.
No, the cost of the new bus. I heard two hundred and fifty thousand.
The last one was two hundred and quarter, two hundred and twenty, and that was twenty years ago.
I have two hundred and nine.
Two hundred and nine thousand.
Yeah.
I thought I heard that figure at the last presentation.
But it isn't, you know, it isn't, the bus that we have, and you know this better than I do, it isn't the same type of bus as a charter bus.
Right. We have a Bluebird, I think, and, yeah, typically, it's a PreVost or something like that. It's a charter bus, it's a more expensive bus.
PreVosts used to call our bus a Corvair, a school bus.
Right. Let's elaborate the cost analysis, and there's some holes in the analysis, and it's kind of, we're not going to really conclude, I don't think, today, anything cost-wise. Bill, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
No, I just, I mean, I think we're at the point where we need to make a, provide a motion that will allow these folks to go in the direction that they need to go. So if we need to, if you need a motion to buy a bus, I'll make that motion just to get it on the floor. So let's pursue buying a bus, or whatever, finding out about a bus. I'll make a motion that we buy a bus. Maybe we can get a second for that.
Thank you, I'll second that.
Well, we have a motion and a second to buy a bus. I am totally opposed to that, and this is the discussion part of this process. And I don't need to hear anything about costs, even if we can make money, and I think safety, once we are aware that there are safety challenges with us running a bus, I think we need to get out of the bus business, because once we know that, if there'd be an accident that people would get hurt or worse, we would certainly be in a position of liability that you knew it and you didn't deal with it. And so, just on the safety issue, the secondary thing to me is the competition with free enterprise, you know, for-profit businesses that are out there. We're subsidizing people that are using this service or, you know, going on trips. And I think that, you know, there are other vendors out there that do this for a living, and they're licensed, and they have all the understanding of what's required of a driver and the health backgrounds of these people, and they have backup if we have an accident or a breakdown. So all those things go away from the county responsibility, as it should be to me, in my mind. And so it's kind of, in terms of, just if you just take the safety factor, that's enough for me. But if I go on beyond that to the other issues of us, we shouldn't be in the business. We are the last in the state to have a bus, and that should tell us something also. But if you take the other factors, I don't think cost should really, you know, you can analyze cost, but I don't really think it has a place in this. I don't think that's, the discussion should be around the safety of our citizens that are using the service. That's where it ends for me, and so that's why we should have to request.
Yeah, Dennis Farthing, our purchasing agent. Just my experience with enterprise, and maybe I'm not lying, I don't know, but I'll say it anyway, I thought we wanted to get out of the ownership business of vehicles in the county, and to take on something of this magnitude, to get who's going to take, who's going to maintain it, who's going to do the maintenance scheduling, who's going to take care of the scheduling to see who gets it, who doesn't get it? And those are all things that need to be entered into it, and with the enterprise part of it, it's made the whole process that much easier, that we get the vehicle, we don't do nothing with it, but drive it.
You're referring to enterprise leasing of our-
Yeah, for the, I was trying to make some type of the maintenance part versus, and if you, for all the vehicles we own, it's just going to put a burden on the people or the department that's responsible to go ahead and maintain that vehicle on a regular basis. And I mean, from my perspective, I just think it's, I think it's a wrong move. I think the ownership part of it is not something that the county should be in.
Well, I would like to reply. Quite frankly, and I respect you, Dennis, you know that, I think we had a contract with Brightfield for the service of the bus. I don't think it was an onus on our local people, within the county government. Number two, we are very fortunate in that we have a lot of people within the county who take pride in being different. And in fact, the bus was named Pride of the Valley. This was not the first bus the county owned. There was a previous bus. This bus replaced another bus. This is what we do, and we have done well for many years. And as for supplementing funding, I believe the lottery helps us with that. And I know that sometimes a pool can be a problem to get lifeguards, but there are specific contractors out there who specialize in certain things, and one would be making sure we have buses. We could, in other words, instead of contracting for full bus service, we could contract for a bus driver's service. And I believe that that is possible. And so therefore, I truly believe that continuing with our tradition in this county of having ownership of a bus that we have at our disposal, especially for the seniors and on occasion for other items, I think that it's worth pursuing. I think the price is a consideration, and I think that when it comes to drivers, they have to have CDL licenses, they have to be insured, and I think that we can safeguard against anything by doing the right things there.
Go over the question, I'll take chair.
All right, the motion's on the floor. Did you repeat it to buy a bus?
Yes, the name motion was to move forward in purchasing a bus.
Okay, on favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Fails for two, one. So you're not here for what we, I guess that, by default, that doesn't-
Well, yeah. They wanted to pursue the use of a bus company to provide a tour company or whatever to provide the service.
So between Dean and Dennis and some others, they've worked up a request for bid documents that, going back to our May discussions, was in the works at that time when you finalized it. I think with your approval, get out in the field and see what's available in terms of contractors that might be interested in providing the service.
Well, and what we've found since, Dean has done some additional homework, and we did have this proposal to offer for bus companies to provide services for us. And what we found is, when we wrote that proposal, we were assuming sixty trips per year, which we found is not as many as we've been doing. As a matter of fact, for this year, we've only taken one trip so far, and we have eleven more booked, we have some that are kind of in the works, but we're really nowhere near the volume that we thought we were going to have. And I think, you know, as you can see, from two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen, the number of trips we took when we had our own bus dropped, and in two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen, the trips again are even lower. And I will say, some of that is probably due to the uncertainty as to, you know, what were we going to do for the bus? But I don't think, I think we've overstated the number of trips that we have in there in front of these conversations with the drivers. We probably have to change the phrasing in there as far as pricing structures. But, you know, so far this year, with the trips we've booked, we've booked with more different charter companies, so the trips that we've booked have been kind of spread around, and not just all with one company.
Now, I'm not sure if we want to get ahead of ourselves here, but do we want to get a motion on the floor to allow them to, go ahead with-
Then the motion is to allow the agency, AAA, to pursue an agreement or a contract with a tour provider or providers.
First step in that is request for bids, and from there, you know, that's something to work with.
But they would come back for a second vote on the provider.
Right.
It's not all-
It would be a contract.
It would be a contract.
Right.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, that's my motion.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second the motion, I'm not in favor, but as you would put it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And my only question was, if there are proceeds or there are funds available from, you know, the sale, for example, is it all right to subsidize some of the fares as we ease into this, or so people can adjust to new rates, or is that something that's possible?
I think that would be possible. That's something that we had assumed that we would do, assuming that we would have the permission to move forward with trying to sell the bus. And at this point, we still own it, and we are still just basically garaging it. So yes, certainly, if you do that, we don't think the value is particularly high.
Are there any further discussion on this motion?
I would just say that my vote will still respect what you say and what you do, but I think I need to speak for who I believe in the silent majority, and so that will be reflective of my vote.
I will say, at this point, with the number of trips that we're doing, it's so low, it's almost, it is right now below the threshold for bidding, so it will be-
I think we still go through the process, and then we know what the numbers are.
Okay.
And then if, I'll fast forward, let's say, a contract comes back, or a proposal comes back, we proceed to a contract, assuming it will be approved by the commissioners, that may increase the amount of participation, potentially, and you may get back over that threshold, and if you do that, then you're covered.
And it will make the process easier for the folks in the centers to book, if they're familiar with the company, and what they do, and how they charge, it would make it easier to plan trips as well, so.
If I could just add something too, in my conversations with the center managers, when in the time that we've stopped using this, we've stopped using our bus, when they've gotten prices from charter bus companies, they just do not solely look at the cost, they look at how dependable the company was, how comfortable the vehicle is, how well the drivers are trained, how well the drivers perform. So they're looking at the big picture, they're just not looking at the cost or something that you can't measure, that you indirectly paid for. So I think, once the center managers explain to the participants what we were trying to do, we weren't trying to take away bus trips, but we wanted to make them as good, the quality as high as possible.
And safe.
And safe. Okay, if that's all.
And again, I must keep emphasizing, I believe the service that we offered had many hidden benefits as well, and I believe the safety is a tap.
All right, in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed.
Aye.
Two to one, you make a receipt. Thanks for all the time you put into all this, and best for the majority is always the foremost in our minds.
Okay, I've got, after this, I'll arrive, yeah. The first is to ask your approval of a grant submission. This is to the Pennsylvania County Risk Pool, who is our liability and property carrier. Each year, they make available a grant to the county as part of their loss prevention efforts, and this year's grant, just as last year, is a twenty thousand dollar grant available with no match, to put toward any projects that the county believes will be beneficial and will reduce risk. That process, each year, goes through the Safety Committee, and we spend the full of the year just throwing things on a list to see if they might be a good idea, as claims come up, or as incidents come up. And so I'd like to just walk through the items that we want to apply for this year, and this would be twenty-one thousand dollars worth of items for a twenty thousand dollar grant, and it's not as big of a list, but we have some bigger items. The first being elevator control upgrades and MHIDEI, of twelve thousand dollars. They have an elevator there that doesn't necessarily need replacing at this point, but it does need controls updated, obviously malfunctioning controls are a risk, you know, safety issue, and so that's something that we recommend, including in the grant. Also, at MHIDEI, there is a hatch in the ceiling that accesses the roof for each BAC maintenance, stormwater runoff maintenance, and so on. And over the years, our maintenance staff and the contractors have been utilizing a series of ladders, just sort of leaning them and cobbling them together to get to the roof hatch, and it's a terrible arrangement, and it has a lot of risks. So what we propose is a, what's referred to as a ship's ladder, and it would be fabricated, we did get a price on this from a local fabricator, to build and install at a cost of twenty-six hundred dollars.
Is that one of those wooden ones, or is it a metal one?
It would be metal. It's metal with railings, with, you know, it doesn't hinder any other, it's at the top of a stairwell, so it doesn't really hinder any traffic, it would just be a vast improvement.
Thank you.
Also, two AED, or Automated External Turbulator Devices, to be inside one of the probation building and one of the central booking station. Obviously, those are often high-stress environments that could cause people a heart issue, and it's good to have the turbulators in place. And lastly, for the Sheriff's Office, a simulation suit for taser training, how to call, oh, sorry, the AEDs are four thousand six hundred dollars total. Simulation suit for taser training would be eight hundred dollars. This is a suit much like what you see for dog training, where someone will wear it and prevent injury. This allows the officers a chance to use a real-time, real-life taser for their training, but the victim, so to speak, is protected from the shock, and this way they can improve accuracy and learn how to use the device, and not just simulate it, but actually utilize it in their training, without having to put someone else in harm's way, essentially. So, and that's total cost of the vehicle. So all of that totals twenty thousand dollars, and I just briefly want to add.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty thousand dollar risk pool grant application.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Are you not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, so moved.
Okay, the next three things are some advisory board approvals, appointments, reappointments. First, for the Area Agency of Aging, we have one person whose term is ending, having served two, three-year terms, and being ineligible for reappointment, and it's Jan Dreyer, in the retired consumer category, and so we will thank her for her service. Then we have four members whose first three-year term is pending, and will serve a second term to July one, twenty twenty-one. They are Priscilla Heist, Patricia Malley, Joan Marie Norman, and Erin Ilias. That's for approval.
Make a motion that we accept the extension for another term. Four votes as presented.
And I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Sorry, I can't put these together, I know that's what you're thinking, Commissioner, sorry. The next would be Scott Core, who's our Director of Lebanon County Visions Affairs, would be, is filling an unexpired term, an expired vacancy, ending June thirty, twenty twenty-one, and Kimberly Crider Umble of Lebanon Family Health Services would be, is willing to serve a three-year term, effective July first, and go to June thirty, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to appoint Scott Core and Kim Crider Umble to the Area Agency of Aging Board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Are you not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
The Governor Dick Board of Trustees, we have two members of that board, whose three-year terms are expiring, wish to be reappointed, they are David Eichler and Thomas Harp. They were going to June thirty, twenty twenty-two.
Make a motion to-
I'll second the motion.
Second, and we make those, Governor Dick appointments. Any comment or question? Are you not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
And we have two vacancies on the Community Act of Partnership Advisory Board, resulting from the departure of Scott Barry and Diane McKinney, and those individuals are Linda Windell, and Wendy Denatali, and they will fill the unexpired terms, going to, one is December twenty twenty, the other is December twenty nineteen.
Make a motion to appoint Windell and Denatali to the cap pool.
Second.
Dean, did you want to do these together?
Yeah.
Any comment or question? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Okay, you have been provided with a list of medical assistance transportation provider contract drivers. I would ask for your approval on that entire list, to renew their contracts for the medical assistance transportation program drivers.
Make a motion to approve those contracts.
And I'll second that motion.
Excuse me, the motion is on the floor, it's seconded, to approve the list of drivers. Any comment or question?
Okay.
I'm favoring the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
And the last item I have is a revisit of a hotel tax grant fund application that we talked about at the last meeting, and this would be for the Lebanon County Historical Society, for the Barn Project completion. They are looking for an additional one hundred thousand dollars toward the last items that need to be completed. I think they outlined that, and we talked about that a little bit past, about what the wrap-up items are needed. Your question, the last time we spoke, was would they be willing to phase this grant over, over the years? I spoke to Carol Christ about it, and the answer is yes, and they would be willing to split it over four years. So instead of a one hundred thousand dollar, one-year grant, it would be twenty-five thousand dollars here for four years.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second that motion, I think that was very reasonable.
We have a motion and a second to expend funds from the tourism money, for the historical society, a thousand dollars for over four years in equal installments. Any comment or question, or discussion? Are you not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Move to the adjourn.
Second.
Sandra Jern, thank you all for your participation and your attendance.
Same, in your favor.
And your patience.